Jackie.
We're ready to go?
Yes.
All right. I would like to call the March 25th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to Order. I have all and the dog goes crazy. I'm sorry. Okay, I would like to call the March 25th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to Order. May I, I have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Peyton Howell.
Here.
Figaroa.
Yes.
Rego.
Here.
Ramirez.
Yeah.
Ding Palpong.
Here.
Weidemann.
Here.
Okay, we, we have a forum. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for their support and understanding in having this virtual meeting come together. Please join me in a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives as a result of this pandemic and for their families who are affected by the loss. We keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegor. I pledge. All right, thank you. Just a quick reminder before we get started that when speaking or speaking after someone is, that there's a like a one second delay. But after somebody speaks, just wait like one second and otherwise you'll get cut off. James, we are in mission and we.
Our mission cultivates successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our belief, successful, passionate learners thrive when in changing innovative teaching effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and we fuse social emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community. We prepare students to fulfill their. I see that we do not have any one for public comments.
Do not, okay. James. Report, please.
Sure. Real quickly with the COVID virus, we want to thank everyone for flattening the curve by staying at home, trying to be social distancing and washing your hands. And in, in, in addition as well, we want to encourage people to take care of their mental and physical health. We also would like to thank the essential businesses and services that are working around the clock during this time of crisis. That includes the police stations, fire stations, hospital and clinics, gas stations, transportation services, grocery stores, food banks, and the post office. As everyone know, Fenton has three priority during this crisis. Priority number one, we want to make sure our students are sustained. We want to feed and care for their safety, health, and welfare of our students and families. We will continue to distribute food until this crisis is over, which includes spring break. We have distributed 3,000 meals since we have closed the school. A huge shout out. We want to provide continuity of learning through our e-learning. A huge salute to our, to our teachers who are being creative, flexible, and creating engaging lessons. Teachers are engaging our students with this SEL, social emotional focus. The technology they are using includes but not limited to Google Classroom, YouTube Live, Twitch, Screencast, WeVideo, EdPuzzle, Khan Academy, TED Talks, Flipgrid Zoom, Google Meets, and so on. Administrators along with the IT coaches are supporting students and staff with technology. Our average student attendance so far is 94%. In regards to student phone book and Wi-Fi, we're providing support and happy with the current status. We're especially keeping a special eye on our students who are homeless, new immigrants, and folks that have special needs. Our third priority at Fenton is to communicate clearly and in a timely manner. We will continue to send messages like Wednesday words, like e-blasts throughout the week. In times of crisis, we believe the more communication about pertinent crisis information, the better. Again, thank you. That's the end of the report.
Okay, thank you, James. Anyone have any questions regarding the report?
No, thank you, James. It's great that we have 94% attendance through all this.
Yes. Yes, that's really good. All right, then we move on to the consent agenda. Do you have any question?
No.
Nope.
No.
Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was like, went blank for a little bit, but going back to the, the COVID report, just something that just came up, I know we're going day to day on this and, and I think we're doing a fantastic job with keeping up on things and trying to stay ahead of it. And looking, looking ahead, let's say we have it lasting till, until the end of the year. You know, how, do we have a game plan on, you know, like graduation prom, those things? I mean, is that something that we're not, I mean, obviously we're not going to make decisions until we know more, but are we looking ahead on that at all?
Ken, we sure are, and the rest of the board are, as you know, are administrators, are meeting every day throughout this crisis at 9:00 AM. In regards to your question, the graduation that will take place, we just don't know where and in what format. Would it be virtual? Would it be in August? Would it be in July? Absolutely, and we're taking it month by month. We don't want to cancel something too quickly or too late. We like to use the word both cancel and postpone. Postpone is a little bit more hopeful, as you know. But for example, you have something April 1st or April 2nd, those are going to be canceled. So we do have a plan. We're very conscious of it, and there's about 1,500 kids who are letting us know not to forget about it as well. So that is in the works.
I, I trust that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Back to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will motion that.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you, Julia. Roll call, please. Peyton Howell.
Yes.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Figaroa.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ding Palpong.
Yes.
Weidemann. Yes. All right, thank you. Now we move on to the discussion items, the first of which is the notice, non-renewal and dismissal. James, James, can you take that?
Sure. Sam Benson is going to take it from here.
Okay. So as you know, if you look on page 86 of your packet, there is a listing of employees. This is the resolution authorizing non-renewal and dismissal of probationary licensed employees. You can see the names in your packet, and we recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay, does everyone see that?
No.
Yes.
Hold on one second. So page 87.
In six. Well, it's the start of the recommendation.
Can I go on my computer and look at that as well as do this at the same time or no?
I'm doing it.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I looked at it already, but so that's fine, but just for as we go along here.
Okay.
So, so just to clarify, these are people who just didn't live up to, you know.
Sure, Patty, there's a couple of things there for the non-renewal. There is one non-tenure teacher that we're recommending to be dismissed. And there are, the rest are substitute teachers that, that we do not renew every year because they're substitute, but rehire the following year, which is our typical protocol.
Right, just to add to that, Patty, these are all what we call probationary employees, so they're, they're non-tenured.
Okay. Everyone good?
Yep.
Yep.
May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the non-renewal dismissal notices resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Jackie, I believe.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please, James. Peyton Howell.
Yes.
Figaroa.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ding Palpong.
Yes.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Weidemann. Yes. All right, that motion has passed. Right now we move on to the next discussion item, the Fenton meal prices for 2020 and 21. Bruce? I, that's yours, Bruce.
I'm here. Great, thanks, Paul. Yes, I'm, I'm page 100 of the board packet. We have the recommended meal prices for the 2020, 21 school year. Arbor has proposed the adjustments for the meals, including all cart pricing that's listed or included as well. The changes, as, as we note in there, are based on the food costs, the a la carte equivalency factor, and that's a factor that's given to us. Comply with is what they refer to as the paid lunch equity, and I kind of gave an abbreviated, abbreviated version in the right up there. And that basically, that's applies to our full price meals, ensuring that the schools are equitable with what we're charging students who are paying full price. And the other piece of that is, we can't, they have to be high enough to, in order to avoid any subsidy from the federal government for paid meals, because we're, we receive federal reimbursement for the, all the meals that we serve. So in order to comply with that paid lunch equity, we have three options. We can either raise prices. We can contribute local funds to offset the cost, or we can apply for a waiver. We're recommending that we increase the price. This will be the first price increase since 2017, 18. And we're recommending, the minimum we would have to increase it to comply with the PLE, the paid lunch equity, would be 10 cents. We could go higher than that. We're not recommending that. We're recommending to go with the minimum 10 cent increase. So it would increase the lunch price from $2.90 to $3.00, and a paid breakfast would increase some 10 cents, by 10 cents, from $1.75 to $1.85. And that would apply again for the next school year. And this is just for the paid meal. The, there's a reduced cost we charge for the breakfast and lunch as well. We're just recommending we maintain that pricing as is right now. So we're asking the board for approval to go forward with these pricing recommendations for next school year.
Do we know if that's comparable, Bruce, to other schools? Are we in that?
It, it, that's a great question, Jackie. Yes, we're probably a little bit behind some of them, but we're, we're right in the ballpark. Anywhere from, you know, $3 to $3.30, $3.40. A lot of schools, they don't really place as much emphasis on the reimbursable meals, so a lot of their programs are more a la carte, which are even costlier than that. But yeah, we're right in the ballpark. We're certainly probably on the lower average compared to the other high school districts in the county.
Okay, thank you.
So what's usually the?
Bruce, oh, I'm sorry, go on, Ken.
I was just going to ask, so prior to this 2017, what's the trend been in, increase of these lunch rates?
Positive, Ken, that that, back then, that increase was 10 cents as well.
Is it usually periodically, every two years then, or more like?
It, it all depends, I think, on the economy, you know, in terms of food costs and those types of things. You know, we try to hold off as long as we can before we have to impose a price increase.
Sure.
All right, great. That, that was actually going to be my question. I was just curious what the increase was. No, no, that's right. What it, what it was last time. Okay, then if nothing further, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the meal pr, meal price increases beginning in the 2020, 2021 school year as follows? Paid breakfast increased by 10 cents for a cost of $1.85, and paid lunch increased by 10 cents for a cost of $3.
So moved. I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Jackie, and may I?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Marian.
I have a, a question on page 102, Bruce. It says Fenton Township High School District. It's the price list for 2020, 2021.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, that's, thanks for catching that. That, that's just a typo, I think, by Arbor when they set that over to us, so we, we can clean that up.
Okay.
Get that correct, but that, the attention is obviously Fenton High School, so.
Sure.
Okay, thank, thank you, Patty. All right, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
May I have a roll call? James? Peyton Howell.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ding Palpong.
Yes.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Figaroa.
Yes.
Weidemann. Yes. Right, that motion has passed. The next item is the Arbor Food Service Contract Renewal. And there is Bruce again.
Okay, so last April, the board approved a bid contract with Arbor Management. We were required to go out to bid. You know, again, we're, it's a federal program, so we did go out to bid, and we received three proposals from various contractors. Arbor was the low bid, so we did recommend that. The board approved that contract. We've finished, or we're finishing, I guess, the first inaugural year of Arbor providing services to us. So the contract is written where each, it's a, we can extend it up to five years, so each year really is, is, the board acts on a separate, almost as if it's an independent contract, but it's a one-year renewal extension of what we're bringing to tonight, and that, that's how the contract is written. So this contract would commence July 1st, 2020, and then it would end on June 30th, 2021. And as it says there, so this would be the first of, of five, and then four more after that, if, if we so choose, or we, or, or not. But we are recommending that we extend it for another year with Arbor. They are recommending and are allowed for the contract increase, and it's tied to inflation. So the increase is 2.3%, and we've included that in, in the packet as well, all the background information that they provided to support that increase. So Arbor is requesting that 2.3% increase, which is the increase in Consumer Price Index. The other piece of it also is, you, you're probably aware that the minimum wage by law is increasing in Illinois, and that'll take effect next January, January 2021. So they've, and this is allowed for them to increase the cost of that to accommodate that additional hourly rates for our staff on that work program. And you can increase that without having to go back out to bid, so that's what they've done. They're estimating it to be about $3,100 for that period of time next year. And then, of course, will be based on the number of serving days, that, that final number. And then finally, you know, the, as, as we said, the district receives federal and state reimbursement for all the meals that we serve in this program. The a la carte sales that they produce for us as well, and the ultimate goal is really to break even. And they provided analysis for, analysis for us with the program based on a projection for the number of meals served, the a la carte sales, the reimbursement we receive from the federal government, and then the expenses that are Arbor's management fee, and then the, the meal costs that they charge us. And there, so it's a projected break even point really for the program for the next year. And, and we're on track to, to break even this year as well. So that's, that's our recommendation is to extend Arbor's contract for another year at that increase, and along with that minimum wage price increase adjustment as well. That won't take effect until January 2021.
Hey, Bruce, what's happening with all the kids being out of school? You know, we have, we're serving, I don't know how many meals a day, 500 meals a day, but there's another thousand kids who would usually be paying into the program.
That's right. That's, that's a great question. What we're doing is, we actually had an emergency application approved by the state, and what we're following are the provisions of the Seamless Summer Program, so that's the program that we offer in the summer as well to the kids at Fenton. And that's, program is available to districts that have a, a 50% level or higher of free and reduced population. And of course, we meet that. So what that means in the summer, and then the same holds true for what we're doing now, is those meals are provided free to everyone who comes in for a meal. It's a little less rigid in terms of tracking the meals in turn, in terms of, we don't need their name, we don't need their ID. It's basically kind of gotten on, on the honor system. They can come in, we kind of have the drive-through grabbing gold process. I don't know if anybody's seen that, but James and others have been out there handing out meals as kids kind of drive up. It's kind of a nice seamless process, but Officer Nelson's been, been out there quite a bit, I know. But anyhow, those meals, we're serving breakfast and lunch at free of charge to anyone who comes through there. And obviously, I think the majority, if not all of them, have been our, our students, come through and have a meal. We're, we keep a tally of all those meals that we serve, and we'll submit that. and we'll submit that to the state, and we will get reimbursed from them for those meals.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Good, great question.
Bruce, one quick question. I just clarified, the increase in the minimum wage, like you said, is over and above the 2.3% increase in CPI. So that amount is subjective, because we really don't know what, the $3,100 is just an estimated amount.
Well, we know what the rates are gonna be, Paul, but we just don't know. The only variable is the number of serving days that we'll be serving. So that's based on our current calendar. It could fluctuate somewhat. I just didn't want to anybody to say that you told us that amount. If we, you know, a situation like what we're in now, kind of thing, you know, where hours have been, you know, obviously are changing quite a bit, and serving days are being reduced. So it's, that's a very close estimate of what it will be.
Okay, all right.
Did that answer your question? Sorry.
Yes, 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 it does. Because it's, you know, obviously it'll be budgeted for, and even though it's, right now it's a guess, but I mean, it's a good guess.
And it's included in the projection, Paul, as well, that added costs. So when we factored in all the costs associated with the program, that additional cost in labor is accounted for as well.
Okay, all right, thank you, Bruce.
Sure.
Anybody else? Then the, sorry? Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the contract renewal extension commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021 with Arbor Management, Inc. For the provision of food service management and an increase in wages due to the minimum wage that are mandated by the state of Illinois. Thank you, Leonel. And Jackie, thank you for the second. Roll call, please. James?
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yep.
Hillpalpong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Ragel?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. The next item is the Certified Staffing Plan for School Year 2020, 21. James, that's yours.
All right, can, I'm gonna back up one second on the Arbor. Do we have to guarantee them so many days to serve? Like this year? Do we have to guarantee them so many days?
I can't remember. There are some provisions in the contract, Patty, for that. I don't remember exactly what they are, but the circumstance now is they're pleased, you know, to be serving what we're doing now. And we're not alone. I mean, they're doing this for other accounts as well during this time that we're down, doing this grab and go stuff. But there are, I can't remember the exact language, but I can get that for you in terms of the, you know, if the year is cut short, what happens then? But we're, there's protections in there for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, James.
It's okay. Oh, go ahead. Before we start talking about the Certified Staffing Plan, just a huge shout out. And I applaud both Sam Benson and Yovon, and the building administrators of putting this together. I think the board will be happy with what we're recommending here. In general, if you're asking, once again, this staffing plan is for certified staffing staff. That means our teachers, basically, okay? FTE, if you are following on page 117, FTE stands for Full Time Equivalent. Basically, how many instructors we have in the building. The staffing plan, I think this is the, if you have, if you take away something in regards to creating a staffing plan, it's really based on student needs and student programming. We want to make sure we fulfill the needs of the students, number one, the classes they want to take, obviously, in our overall programming as a public high school. Last year, the board approved 111 FTEs, 111 FTEs. Next year, for the following school, this, after this year, which is 2021, we are projected to need 110.1 FTEs, okay? 110.1 FTEs, which is a decrease of a .9 FTE. So there's a decrease of our certified individuals in the building. What I'm gonna describe right now are how we got to that number, okay? In regards to our applied technical courses, it went up .2 because more students are interested in automotive. In regards to our ESL bilingual, it's down 1.0 FTE, fewer students. In regards to our special education, it's up .4. We added co-teaching sections to support students with IEPs. In regards to student service or student support, it's up .5 because we need to hire a part-time social worker because of the increased social emotional needs of our students. In regards to oral language, it's down 1.0 because of fewer student requests. Overall, again, the FTE has decreased to a .9. I'll stop right there if there are any questions.
So world languages?
Down. And in particular, our Spanish requests.
Do we know why that is?
They're not requesting those courses, pretty much, Juliette. They're taking perhaps more German, more other world language.
Oh, I mean, do we know that? I mean, do we know that that's what's going on, or that they're taking other languages? Or because don't kids need to have like three years of a language to get into college and whatnot?
Sure. I'm gonna go ahead and pause here to get clarification, to give you that answer. Yovon or Sam?
Chime in? So one of our things that we've done is we've, if you take a look at like Family Consumer Science, Applied Tech, we've really done more of a program of studies focus. So students are taking other areas. We've actually lost more in like Spanish native speakers. So they don't need that as much. And colleges are really only asking for two years of a language as we go forward. So that's why we changed, that's where some of the changes have gone. We've also gone down by some students as well. So all of those things have been taken into account.
I think one thing to keep in mind as well, when we say down, I don't think we should take it as a negative, because they might be going somewhere else, like more automotive, or like what Yovon stated earlier, they might want to take another electives as well. So just to, I got it.
Yeah, no, I don't necessarily think it was a negative. I didn't realize that colleges are now looking at it as a two-year requirement as opposed to a three now.
Does that, are we anticipating a smaller-sized student body then next year as well?
Kit, I'm gonna take that question. In general, we've been very steady. But right now, at Bensonville District 2, there's a larger class of sixth and seventh graders. They're gonna be a little bit bigger than normal. I believe it's anywhere between 50 to 75 more students than we normally have. So maybe in two years, when they come to Fenton, the FTEs will increase.
Right, right. So I'm looking at the four-year trend, and so 2018, 2019, we saw a lower FTE staffing amount. So it looks like you're adjusting as we go, essentially.
Depending on the needs. One thing to keep in mind as well with special ed students, there's rules in public education that the number of special ed students in the classroom, after it reaches a threshold, you need to put a co-teacher there to teach. That always adds to the equation and variable.
So, okay, so looking at four-year averages again, it, yeah, it just kind of seems like it fluctuates up and down.
Yes.
So, okay.
So, James, what you just said regarding the special ed, if we were to get a bunch of special ed students, even just a few students, that would increase our cost, because special ed is such a huge portion of the district's cost, correct? So even if we get a few students, because they need an additional teacher, just like you said, we would need more staff, correct, if that would happen?
I think in general, that's the formula. Depending on the students' needs, as you know, we had outplacement. Some folks, some of our students could be sent to NetSec because they have better services there. That'll definitely increase tuition and cost. Yes, that's accurate. And once again, I just want to pinpoint, it depends on the student needs. And disability. Lastly, I would, lastly, just to put it out there as well.
No, I'm sorry. You know, before we get up, I just wanted to ask Yovon really quick regarding the word language. Back to what I think Juliette was asking, so the decrease in Spanish or Spanish language does not necessarily mean that there's an increase in French and German. Just means they've gone to other.
Yeah, they've taken other programs of study within the building. So, yeah, it could mean that they just didn't choose that area. And again, one of the big ones we've taken a look at is the Spanish native speakers. They've kind of, they've fallen off. So maybe they've taken their two years, and then they've gone on to another, another electives, or something in Applied Tech, like James talked about, maybe it's an autos class, which, by the way, we've gone now, we used to not have autos too. Now this year, we're gonna gain an autos two class. So there's a lot of other areas that we're actually building as we started to do kind of our career pathways and programs of study. So that definitely gets into that. So to address Kit, to the 1819 school year that you take a look at there, we had a lot of retirements that year. And that was our first year. We also did a lot of, our AP classes also were, we tried to get those at higher numbers, but what we found is that our classrooms are too small to handle higher AP numbers for students. And so that's why the numbers actually kind of balanced out the next year. So we're probably gonna be right around this number for a while here, until kind of as James talked about, this group is coming from Bensonville in the next couple of years.
Right. What I'm seeing here, based on these histories and trends, is it's a natural, it's a natural flux as you guys are managing each year with FTEs. So it seems like a on in, what's FCS?
Family Consumer Science. Yes.
All right.
I also, Paul, before the motion, we would also like to recommend a situation here. Last, as you know, we have a part-time dean, part-time Mr. Medel is taking that lead on. He's part-time assistant dean to Mr. Castro, and also a PE teacher at Point Four. So he's Point Six part-time dean and Point Four PE teacher. At this point, our need is to have another full-time dean, okay? And the recommendation is to move this position from Point Six to a full-time dean, which is an administrative position, okay? With a population of 1,500 students, 1.6 dean is too low. In particular, if we want to move to restorative justice, we want to take a chunk out of the bullying aspect of what's taking place in their school to be more creative and be more progressive. In the past, we had more dean assistants, but due to the structural change, we went with this model and 500 students.
Can I just ask a quick question? Are you saying he's a part-time dean and a part-time gym teacher? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Juliette.
Okay.
We need a full-time dean to work with Mr. Castro. And Mr. Medel has done a great job, but it's just too overwhelming at this present moment.
And so Mr. Medel doesn't want to do it full-time?
He's interested, but as you know, with HR rules, we would have to post it. You would have to apply for it. There's an interview process. We have to open it up to everyone. But we like what he's doing as a dean.
So you want to increase the deeming from Point Six to full-time? And we're also increasing social services, too? Are there that many emotional needs that are kids?
Yes. Yes, to be honest, yes. In particular, with the issues going on, as you know, whether it's poverty and what kids are going through at this time. Not particularly to COVID, but in general, we've seen that number increase. We have two social workers right now, Patty, with a student body of 1,500 students again. And they need, they need more support there. Basically, 750 students per social worker.
Okay.
And we're taking the chunks by the time. Part of our tactic is, let's try a .5, start there instead of jumping to a full-time. And if the needs continue to increase, perhaps with the board's approval, to go full-time. The load is heavy.
So, but in essence, it would be a full-time dean. It's just one dean, you're just splitting it between two people.
Now, there were two questions there, Juliette. One was for worker, which was mentioned a little bit earlier. We have social worker right now. We want to increase, hire another social worker to .5. In regards to dean, we have a full-time dean and a dean that's working .6. That's Mr. Castro and Mr. Medel. What we're recommending here is to hire another full-time dean instead of a part-time.
Okay. And then if, if the position goes to Mr. Medel, then we need to hire another PE teacher?
No, no. Good question, Jackie. What we created right here, that 110.1, that covers our need for the following year. Great question.
So that 110.1 is already included in the, you know, it's already built in with the full-time dean?
No.
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 Can I jump in real quick? Sorry. So once we post the position, we interview like James said. If Jason Medel is hired for the position after we go through the process, then we actually would reduce that PE number, because right now he's teaching in PE. So when he moves in as a, if that happens, again, I'm not determining anything. I'm just explaining. If, or any teacher for that matter, goes into the full-time dean position internally, that will change our numbers from one, the 110 number, that will actually decrease depending on who it is.
Or not. I mean, if we, if we pull a full-time science teacher in to be dean, we still need 12 science teachers, right?
Right. And we look at, we would look at the actual situation in that department and what we would be able to do. So, I mean, there's, like you said, yeah, maybe not depending on which department. The PE department, if it is him, that would reduce that department. I can't, I don't want to say a percent right now, but there would be a reduction there.
Oh, I guess I was confused by what James was saying. I thought that he was saying you wanted to keep Mr. Medel's position as it was, and then hire somebody to work with him, but he keeps him as a gym teacher.
No, what James said was he wants to increase the position from a .6 to a full-time.
I see. So he can, he can apply for the job if he wants.
It's, it's an administrative increase of a .4, kind of what it is.
I got you. So if he wants the full-time position, he needs to apply from within.
Correct.
Got you. Okay, I guess I got a little confused with that. Okay. Got you. Okay, I, I guess I, I got a little confused with that. Okay, all right.
Okay.
I have another question.
No, I'm sorry, go on.
I have one more question. In the event he and do we have a place for him to become a full-time PE teacher again?
Uh, yes, we do. We have enough sections for him to, to be able to teach full-time in PE.
And, okay, and I have one other question. It, I don't know if I missed this, but do we have, uh, price points in which we're looking at? I mean, are we talking about, is this, uh, are we looking at how much, how much pay and?
Salary cha- payroll, yeah.
Well, that would be, uh, as, as anytime we deal with something like this, it would measure it with their experience and kind of where they are. So that would be something that Sam and James would, uh, would work out with, depending upon who gets the position.
Okay. Right. We're, we're good?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think that ba- basically, the bottom line here is, is that, uh, two full-time dean positions are warranted bas- based on demand. And, uh, um, and, and I, and I think that's what's being, um, asked for here.
Right, fine. Could I just ask one other question? Are, are you finding, just, are, are you finding that you're having more, more disciplinary problems in the la- in this past year with students? I mean, are we having more issues?
It's not a issue, it's more of a restorative justice issue. We're changing the way we deal with students. Certainly that we're actually trying to discipline them more. So it's not about handing out consequences, it's about truly kind of changing the behavior of students. And with, uh, social media as things that have been going on, we've really tried to focus on our, uh, that's why the social work person is, is something that we're asking for as well, or that we're going to, we want to increase as well, is because we want them to work together in this kind of restorative mindset. Um, with that comes a lot of training for teachers, there come, there's a lot of other things that go into it. So it's not as much discipline as it is more of a, um, we really are looking at different ways to change the behavior and not just, oh, you were, you did this, now you're going to receive this consequence. It's, it's going to take a little bit more time to, for him to sit down and actually work with students on kind of changing these behaviors. So, um, you know, we, we've spent a, a lot of time with the ROE and, uh, with a group called Moja, uh, to really work on, uh, changing this mindset. It's very much of an SCL kind of, uh, system. Uh, as opposed to like, again, like I said, it's, it's not as much punitive, it's much more of looking at the behavior itself, looking at the person and the trauma that's gone on there.
Got you. But I, I guess my question was, are we having more issues with students this past year than we have in previous years? I guess that was my question, my question.
Uh, no, as a matter of fact, since we started kind of the restorative mindset in some of our SCL, we've actually had less fights than we've had in the past. So it goes to show that we're really kind of, we're, we're hitting at this, but we'd really like to reduce it to even a, a smaller number. So to, your answer about the discipline is no, we haven't. Um, but we'd like to see it even decrease even more, and we think that, um, whoever takes that role, it, we're really looking for somebody to do have, that does have much more of a restorative mindset and somebody that's willing to jump in more on kind of the bullings, which not that we, our bullying is terrible, but we want somebody to lead in that. We want to be proactive and not reactive, and so that's why we really need that spot, so.
Okay.
So if we're staying the same or trending down, how do we justify getting more so- social service staff?
Well, we're not trending down in our, in our trauma needs for our kids. Um, I mean, that, that is, that continues to, to increase, and we do have that data number from our social workers currently, as well as our special education minutes. So we, we've taken a hard, long, hard look at that, and, uh, we've utilized every resource that we can. I mean, every one of our social workers has a social work intern. Um, our psychologist has had an intern, so we've really tried to do what we can, but we've recognized that there's much more trauma that's going into this. And when you look at kind of national data as well as ROE and DuPage data, um, we've either misidentified or have kind of pushed, so.
Okay. Well, and this plays, plays into our social emotional development as well, we're, you know.
Oh, yeah. All right, thank you for the clarifications.
All right. Thank you all. So then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approved the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Certified Staffing Plan as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Juliette.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Patty. A roll call, please, James.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Think pal palm?
Yeah, I, I think I'm going to abstain. How do you abstain on that? Is that?
Just say no.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
No.
Wederman?
Yes.
Sorry, my internet.
Motion, uh, has passed. Wait, I'm sorry, did someone say something?
No.
Yep, Yovan just came back.
Yovan just got back on, he got.
Uh, sorry about that, I didn't realize you guys were in the middle of, my internet went bad.
Okay, all right. All right, we move on to the committee reports. Um, first one is the Bensonville Community Foundation, uh, Juliette and Kit.
No meetings.
Right, no meetings. Um, as far as, uh, the, the status of the foundation, um, there, there's work right now on, um, on the treasury side, uh, working with, um, uh, filing the twenty nineteen tax year. So it's due in June, we'll get that through. Uh, we're, um, us two with the, the COVID nineteen, so trying to figure out how to keep business going as, as far as, uh, governance, so that's about it.
Okay, and then?
Just, uh, between me and, and the, the, the board president, Tom, we're working on, uh, it was just a one-on-one meeting, so.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Meeting, as we know, was postponed that today, so that has been postponed to the April twentieth or board meeting, our next board meeting.
April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth, so that'll be at five thirty. And for all the items that were to be covered under the committee meeting will be covered at that time. Um, the ISB delegate, uh, there's nothing new there. You know, as we all know, the, uh, annual conference has been, uh, canceled.
What?
Yeah. All right, um, NetSec, Eddie, I believe you went to the meeting?
I did. Uh, James, do we have anything to report?
Sure, there, there were two big items. Uh, one was the renewal of their, uh, CSBO. Um, and also the evaluation of their, of their, uh, director there at special ed, uh, was the majority of, of, of the time we spent in the meeting. So, um, both were renewed, um, and, um, NetSec, to me, is doing an outstanding job. Uh, their administrative team is, uh, very professional and experienced. After COVID nineteen, um, settles down a little bit. Did I miss anything, Patty?
No, you covered it well.
All right, thank you. Last one is the Policy Committee. I don't get in something, I don't believe there's anything under that.
No.
Okay. All right, so the next item is
Next board.
Our next board meeting will be on the April twentieth. So then our, uh, finance facility meeting will be at five thirty on that same day. Um, does anyone have any business to discuss?
Are we going to roll with the same, um, as far as the students coming back, James? Have we made a decision yet? Are they going back on the twentieth, like Chicago Public Schools, or are we still set to go back on the step? What's your thought?
My thoughts are ve- very simple, uh, Jackie, right now, we're going to make unity and pay attention to what's happening at the state, as well as the, um, Illinois Association of School Board, uh, as well as ISB, as well as the Regional Office of Education and the DuPage, uh, Public Health Department. Um, I think there's going to be announcements in regards to, uh, the opening and the ending of Act of God Days uh, from the governor, uh, this next few days. I do not believe, as my opinion, that the April eighth day is, um, realistic. Um, and I'm also, um, I also believe that April twentieth, which CPS is trying.
Can I ask a question? Oh, go ahead.
Sure, just, I think the, the thought is this, Juliette, we got to take it, you know, pretty much a day at a time, a week at a time. And, and what makes it complex is that we have to also be united and collaborating with the other agencies, uh, in particular the, uh, CDC and, and public health.
Okay. I wondered, I wondered too, um, how are we gonna address and, um, grades with these kids? I know, um, like my daughter's college is going with pass, fail, but, uh, for grades. I don't know if you guys have addressed that with, uh, you know, with your administration? Are you guys going to do grades or have you guys discussed that at all?
Yes, we have, Juliette. It's, it's, it's being determined, and we're not working in isolation per district. We're, we're, again, working with other, uh, public high schools, working with superintendents, working with the curriculum directors all over the state to see what will take place. Um, and also watching, uh, the Ill- uh, Illinois, uh, School Board Association, I'm sorry, the ISB in regards to how they would like to roll that out as well. As you know, um, the standardized testing, uh, has been canceled, and that was basically a nationwide as well as a statewide sort of mandate, uh, from our civic leaders. Um, I think something like that, Juliette, will come out sooner or later.
Okay, and I did, we did receive, um, I, I just, uh, by chance today, something from Gab or Gab Michael's, uh, out to parents, uh, well, Benton, to let them know that they'll be doing a forty-five minute AP test or something like that?
Um, as you know, the AP test is run by College Board, uh, which is this third entity. We are going to ad- advertise that. I think they ruled that out about two or three days ago. As we get more information, Eileen is taking the lead with that along, as long, along with, uh, Sarah McDougall. When we get more information in regards to that, uh, we will rule that out. We also want our students to have an option to, to decline the test and get their money back, as you know. Um, uh, there, there, there are many obstacles and many, uh, I believe, um, challenges, uh, by, you know, uh, taking the, the AP exam. In particular, one main reason is that the learning has, has, has been interrupted with, with the pandemic. And, um, it's going to be a, a step-by-step sort of, 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 uh, decision-making, depending on the students. Is what our, our, what is our opinion in regards to what they're proposing? Um, is their teacher in front of them teaching?
Absolutely.
So that's where we're at, um, in regards to that, but more information is a great question.
Yeah. So with this e-learning, um, platform, um, you know, how, how is this, have you gotten any feedback from of students and faculty on how, uh, this is being, uh, experienced?
The general e-learning, is that your, what you're saying, Kit?
Right, yeah. I mean, the, you know, e-learning was, was really, was something we're able to vote on and implement. And now it's for us, uh, with this situation, just.
For everyone.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, but the, the whole platform wasn't really made for a prolonged period of time, right? It was for a snow day so that kids could go on, but we're seeing that it's being used as, as one of the critical platforms to help us educate our kids now. So the, I, I, I just was thinking now, is the question is, have we gotten feedback from our students? How is it coming along? You know, with our faculty, how, how are they being able to adapt to this type of platform for them to, to, to teach? You know?
Right. Uh, I could talk in a couple of points there. You are absolutely right, Board and Kit and, and Jack, Patty. The e-learning was for emergency days, absolutely correct. Um, it wasn't made for a pandemic. Um, I'll go back to the earlier statement. Uh, that sort of learning is to really have your teacher in front of you, who's experienced, who's, who's, who has, uh, the skill set to teach. Um, it's, it's, the e-learning platform is being stretched because of this, the, the situation we're in. Um, and in regards to feedback, we are getting feedback from our teachers, uh, in, in regards to, it's challenging. They have to be, it's, it's, it's very dynamic, uh, learning and, uh, working with the technologies there, that they're given. Um, uh, some feedback from the students, do we have a systematic way of getting feedback? We're, we're not there yet, Kit. Um, but it's, 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 it's difficult for, for, I, I believe, for our students to, to be engaged in some way. Uh, this is the, I think this is the best, um, alternative, it's better than zero, um, uh, learning, um, I would say. But, um, is it ideal? No, it's not ideal.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm just grateful that we have e-learning in place.
Absolutely.
Correct, and I was telling, um, uh, Juliette earlier, um, we were, there was only eleven school with an e-plan ready to go before this take place, and we, we, we're just fortunate to have it in place. Um, there are some school districts buying thousands and thousands of Chromebook to roll out, and, um, you know, the transition and the distribution and implementation, there's going to be hiccups on that. But we, 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 we have the technology, uh, we took advantage of our, our funding uh, five years ago to start the one-on-one initiatives, plus the professional development, plus personalized learning. I think we have made the right decision, uh, year after year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely think, I mean, it's just fortunate that we have this in place. Thanks to our administration and James and, and the board in moving, learning forward. I mean, no one could have obviously foreseen this coming, but it's great that we have this in place and we can take full advantage of it. And that's a very good point, Kit and Patty, that, yeah, it's stretched, but it's the best we have now to move forward, uh, you know, with education. And, uh, from all indications, it's working very well.
I, I agree with all points, um, and then, you know, if we, we have that vision ahead and seeing and anticipating, uh, how education's going to evolve, and, you know, this is just an indicator for us, I think. So something to think about being proactive and looking at, okay, how, how is instruction, education, relationship between students and faculty? Their reaction, communication, how is technology going to change all that? So I would just preface that, um, as we, uh, journey ahead.
Also, um, administrators, I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work these past couple of weeks. I'm grateful you're all stretched and tired and, uh, among other things, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's agreed. I definitely, uh, see the dedication. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah, yes, very much so, thanks. Um, if there's no, no other new, uh, business, there is one changing gears here. We need to, um, uh, I know it seems like we had only a few months ago, but we need to, uh, do James's evaluation so that we're on track again, so we don't get behind. Um, so, if James, if you could prepare your self-evaluation in time for the next board meeting.
Okay.
And like I said, it seems like we just did it, but, you know.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but this time, this time we'll be on track, and if we start it now in March. um, and if we can get your self-evaluation by the, by the April meeting, uh, we'll be on track. And this way we'll be uh, on schedule for all evaluations after, after that.
Sounds good, yep, I'll have it ready.
All right, great, thanks, anything else? Anybody with any other new uh, businesses or anything else?
Do you guys, um, James, do you anticipate needing any help at all at school with the lunches or anything?
W- we're not Patty, but thank you so much, I know you, you've asked and, and have a big heart. We're really trying to stick with the governor's uh, stay-at-home program. Um, as you know, administrators are working around the clock to make that happen. We also have Arbor and we also have uh, uh, Wooddale Police, um, or, or SRO, Mr. Nelson. We should be fine, it's really a flawless system, um, where it's just grab and go and, and uh, it's just great to see the faces of, of the parents of the students as they pick up food or some sort of.
Please let us know though.
Yes, that would be important, thank you Juliette for bringing that up. Thank you Patty. Um, all right, so before we adjourn, um, on that same vein, I'd like to take this opportunity on, on behalf of the Board of Education, and I believe I speak for all members of the Board of Education, uh, that we'd like to thank all the teachers, staff, support staff, superintendent and administration for their selfless efforts uh, during this crisis. And I do know that there are, there are staff that have asked uh, during this crisis for the well-being and continuing education for the students of District One Hundred. Uh, your efforts do not go under this, by this board. We'd like to thank you. So with that, um, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So move.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you Juliette, uh, thank you Patty. Roll call please James.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Is there any uh, issue that come up? Uh, obviously, this is a very fluid and dynamic situation for uh, the district. And um, we will take things as they come. So thanks again, stay safe and good night.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night everybody.
Safe, wash your hands.
Good night.